This is what I do, I'm superintendent Frank Howser in case you don't know me. I'm superintendent of sixth school, just to be very excited. Couple of questions, I mean, tell me some fun things, what did you guys do? We had Halloween yesterday, saw some great costumes. Some good things that have happened in the school that you want to share? You know, and everybody's like, sure, wait, huh, what? Oh, I saw somebody kind of like get a nudge over here, so I'm gonna walk in her back. I don't do this often, like come get close and use proximity as a way of just trying to have a conversation, but what do you think? Did you want to share something cool that happened? I see you're like, looking like you want to say yes. Right? Or maybe the person next to you wants to share something, right? Okay, I'm gonna hand the mic over, you want to share something? Make sure you tell your name, school, and like something that happened really cool recently, like maybe a stage or something like that, something really exciting that might have happened? How about a round of applause? Make sure you hold the mic close, so everyone can hear you.
Okay, um, my name is Natalie Hall, I'm at Sika High School. And just a couple of weeks ago, the cross-country team went to state. And not to brag or anything, but Anna won.
Let's table that for now, because we're gonna get to that shortly, so. But there was also some other cool things that happened, so there was a second place winner, there was like a second place in state, which we're gonna get to later on too. And we have some other people that are here, maybe hand it over to Coach, is that some point, or, no, 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 we know that, no, it's all you, so you were next, right? No, it's still one.
My name's Laywin Swain, and I go to Sika High School. And... We had a lot of kids, did you hear that?
Oh, she's got something to share.
Um, my name's Clamond, and I go to Sika High School. And we had a spare week this week, and we saw lots of great costumes. I don't know, some highlights were, um, there was a hot dog, and a whole hot dog scene. We saw, um, a blow-up, blow-up pig, I believe, and...
There's a dinosaur, Rex kind of wandering around too, I thought I saw, so.
Yeah, yeah, so that was pretty fun.
Now, how did you do at state?
Uh, I thought we were getting to that later.
Since you're here. Hold it together. Well, if it suspends, maybe it's not a bad thing. So we've covered a little run, other good things that are out there, other celebrations that people want to kind of share? Ideas, thoughts, anything, anything? Oh, oh, we've got one over here. What would you like to share?
Susan Wright Ferguson, I teach music at Key, and I'm so excited that this year I finally get to have high school music mentors again. First time in three years, and some of them, some of the mentors are already in the room. And I'm excited to have those fifth graders work with high school students who play the same band themselves.
Don't keep us in suspense, when should we put on our calendar the next, like, when's the concert coming?
December 12th is the fifth grade concert, December 1st is the second grade concert, and there's a third and fourth grade concerts in between there that I don't remember the dates.
So December that's...
There's two weeks of December.
Don't do anything, don't set, schedule anything yet until you hear from your students and Ms. Frank Ferguson.
All right, thank you.
Perfect, thank you. All right, thank you for that. Other good things, I saw Charminay over here, was like, Freddie, did you have something you wanted to, I saw you like, you know?
Yeah, but I don't want to steal this thunder, it's thunder. We, we had a really, really great time at AASOG this weekend. We had two students representing, and, um, and they just, well, not to brag, but they crushed it. They were amazing. They represented Sika High School really, really well, they were well-spoken, teachers from other schools commented on how wonderful they were, and so we had a really good weekend at AASOG.
Who represented us so well?
Oh, it was Felix Myers and Kylie Orlando. And it was the Association of Student...
The Alaska Association of Students.
There you go, he can speak without a mic. But yes, no, it was really, really, really fun. We just, we had a really good time.
So Felix, as, as you were at AASOG this last weekend, and were there any kind of, you know, things that might have come up, really some celebrations or recognitions or anything that you'd like to share? Like, you know, about being delegates of, like, of extraordinaire, I mean, how, would you like to share anything?
Should I still introduce myself?
Of course you should introduce yourself, it's always a nice thing to do.
I'm Felix Myers from Sika High School. Our delegation of two was probably one of the smallest at the entire conference. It was me and Kylie Orlando, and Kylie Orlando got delegate of Region Five, so it was an all, all, all-state Association of School, Student Governments, and she was awarded for that, for being the best in the region. And then I somehow got the...
Somehow, but the modesty, go ahead, continue your story.
I got the delegate of the conference, which meant that of every single region, I was the, I guess, the strongest speaker, so, yes.
So we heard from high school, we heard, you know, I want to hear from some elementary students or some other students, anybody, like, any of the elementary students want to share anything fun that's going on? How was some of like yesterday, what were some of the cool things that you saw at school yesterday? Who hears from Keet Gushahine? All right, who here from Keet Gushahine has Mrs. Ross as a teacher?
Oh, shit, everybody.
Everybody, yeah. Okay, yeah, there's a question, yeah. So what was, I mean, you obviously probably went to the class into the gym within the last couple of days, any of you want to explain some of the cool thing, things that are happening in the gym, right, this week? Anybody? Oh, I got a hand over here. All right, so, share one cool thing, because I've got three students here, I want each of you to share one thing about what you, what you enjoy. Yeah, remember your name.
I'm Vanessa, uh, and one of the cool things where she used the mats to do a maze.
Halloween theme, my big kind of haunted kind of a maze, and, do you like the maze? Very nice, Vanessa, thank you. All right, what did you like about it? Name, don't forget your name.
I am Molly, um, and the cool thing about PE was that there was a big bouncy house slide.
Not really a big bouncy house, it almost went up to the very top of the, it was impressive. You might see a slide later on in my presentation. What did you see? Name, don't forget your name.
My name is Neo, and really, the one thing that I thought was fun is there was like this giant bat cave. There was this long little bat cave.
Tell them how you got through the bat cave, though.
Uh, we got through the bat cave by a scooter.
Yep.
Tiny, there were small ones, like about like a foot long, those ones were tiny ones. And then there was longboards that were like the sky, the size of a small skateboard.
Really? Jeff, which one did you choose?
Long one. And we have one more Keet Gushahine.
All right, let's hear it, don't forget your name.
My name is Neo.
No, Joe.
Neo and Neo, how, what, the odds of that?
We're twins.
Okay, all good. So that complicates even much more, I like your name.
I have a twin.
My name is Neat.
Okay, hold on. You're on. Jonah, Jonah.
The one thing I like, oh, which is that big, long rope with a swing.
Oh, the, what, they call it like the witch swing? Is that what it was, I saw a big glowing like witch neon like light next to it, so.
Yeah.
Wow, that's where we go, I know it's actually, they got it going all the way across, come all the way back, that was pretty cool. How about a round of applause for Keet Gushahine? We heard from, any other students want to, you know, oh, 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 I see some students back here.
Not with her name.
Club, would you like to share something? All right, we're gonna get to that. Don't forget, don't forget to say your name, Cheryl.
I'm Clover. I'm from Pacific High School. An exciting thing that happened is the NEA video came out today that was running around my school with cameras, so that was cool, that was fun.
Who was interviewed in that, anybody that you know?
Me.
Maybe. Um, my teacher Matt and my friend Aubrey, and, uh, I don't know. Me.
Maybe you were in it.
Maybe, oh, maybe.
Oh, yeah.
Let's find out. Yeah.
Oh, sorry, you were volunteered. I'm gonna transition to other non-students, people, anyway. So is there any, anyone that's not a student here that would like to share anything good or fun and exciting that's going on, that I think would be a really good, oh, did you just raise your hand, Molly, too? Okay, yes, please, thank you.
My name is Haley Stupis, I'm a graduate, and I was working for youth advocates over at Pacific High. I unfortunately left that job, but I was very happy to sign a contract with Juul to be able to still help out with Pacific High as well as the STEM cultural program.
Very nice, well, excellent, well, welcome.
Everybody, have a good night.
I know, that's fantastic. Other, so, any parents, any parents or adults, any, anything that you'd like to share about, you know, some of the things that are going on, you know, what's, how's everything going? Any, any, I'm, I'm gonna, I saw somebody made eye contact, the first rule, when somebody's like talking, never make eye contact, because as soon as somebody makes eye contact, it's like you get drawn over to like this side of the room, and you start thinking, it's like, the person will start talking, and just trying to make like, just small talk, and just, you know, is there anything that you'd like to share? I know, nothing that you like, are you sure? You don't have to introduce?
Nope.
Are you, because, you know, I mean, soap, oh, oh, and that's always a classic tale. Would you like to share, how was, how was, did you go on about, you know, yesterday? What'd you think of the weather today? I have to say, the weather today was pretty spectacular, so, all good, okay, I'm not gonna put you on the spot. Other good things that are going on, other things that people would like to share?
I know Blatchley Middle School recently had a dance.
Blatchley Middle School, very nice, let's, let's transition back to, so, would you like to speak to that? All right, we have a student from Blatchley that's got to speak about something fun that happened last Thursday, right? I think it was too.
Hi, I'm Vivian. I know Blatchley Middle School recently had a dance, which seemed like to be a huge hit. We had a fundraiser for the cooking class, and so they made some money off of that, and it was pretty much a really good time. I know a lot of my friends and other peers had a wonderful time, and they, they had a blast.
Very nice. Now, is this the first dance or second dance you've had, actually, your whole middle school, and even maybe?
The whole, this is the second of the whole middle school, but it's the first one of the year.
Yep.
I mean, ever since COVID, and since COVID regular, I was on student council last year, and so we planned a bunch of it. It's so much you do now that COVID regulations are down, but it was fun, it was wonderful.
Very nice, very nice. Well, I have to say, I was not able to make the dance on Thursday, I'm actually sad about that, but I did get a chance to go to the dance last year, and I've gotta say, I have never had so much fun than watching students to dance, the first time having a school dance in about two and a half years, it was just great to see all of them, and it was just fantastic, so, thank you very much for sharing that. So with that, I appreciate everybody giving me the opportunity to talk with you, and I'm gonna probably turn the mic one off, and we're gonna kind of get to some of these other pieces that are gonna be celebrated here shortly, so, thank you all very much, I appreciate it.
It's the worst time to have a hyphenated last name, I apologize.
Could I have a motion to come out of executive session? Can I get a motion? Can I get a motion to come out of executive session and resume the meeting?
I move to come out of...
Recording in progress.
I move to come out of executive session and resume the meeting at 6:51 PM.
Can I give a second? It has been moved and seconded to come out of executive session and remove, and resume the meeting. Is there any grievance discussion? Any opposition? Seeing none, the meeting reconvenes at 6:52 PM. Now, could I now have a motion of determination?
I move to support the superintendent's decision that denies grievance number 01-2020.
May I get a second?
A second.
Moved and seconded, and roll call vote. Could you restate the motion, please? Yes. The motion is, uh, to support the superintendent's decision that denies grievance, uh, number 01-020, 2022. Todd Geller?
Yes.
Tristan Gavon?
Yes.
Mitch Moore?
Yes.
Melanie Borden?
Yes.
Blossom Teal Olsen?
Yes.
Motion passed. Could I have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
I move to adjourn the special meeting.
Can I have a second?
A second, yes.
It's been moved and seconded to adjourn the meeting at, special meeting at 6:53 PM. Meeting is adjourned. This meeting of the Sika School Board is called to order.
We're just recording.
I need a louder voice, I don't have to worry about this. Right, this meeting of Sika School Board is called to order at 6:54 PM. Last salute, oh, actually, this evening, we have a lovely guest to, um, say our pledge of allegiance, Miss Sandan, could you please come forward? Could I just say in English first, or not too? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, which stands the foundation under our invisible, liberating justice law.
Nanonong pa ako ng katapatan sa bandila ng Estados Unidos ng Amerika at sa Republika kung saan ito nakatanda, nakat, nakartidinig. Isang bansa sa ilalim ng Diyos, di mawawatak may kalayaan at hustisya para sa lahat.
Thank you, Mr. Sandan, and that was beautiful. The Sika School Board acknowledges that our schools are located on the ancestral homelands of the Klinkit people who have lived in Shitka since time immemorial. We express our deepest respect and gratitude for our indigenous neighbors, the Klinkit, for enduring care and protection of Klinkit Ani. Moving on to item number five, could I have a motion to approve the proposed agenda and consent agenda? Oh, yes, we do need a roll call. Todd Geller?
Here.
Tristan Gavon?
Here.
Melanie Borden?
Here.
Mitch Moore?
Here.
Blossom Teal Olsen? And Felix Myers?
Here.
All are present. I'm thankful that you're here, keep me, keep me going. All right, now moving on to item number five. Could I have a motion to approve the proposed agenda and consent agenda?
I move to approve the proposed agenda and consent agenda as presented.
My notes say that...
Second.
Second. It's been moved and seconded. May I please get a, um, a motion to, I move to amend, um... Let's see, can I get a motion to approve the amendment to the main motion?
I move to, to amend the motion to remove items 13C temporary wage scales.
Can I get a second?
A second.
It's been moved and seconded, um, to, my notes are horrible, I'm sorry. The motion as we made to amend the proposed agenda to remove agenda item 13C temporary employee wage or scale, so any public comment? Any board comment? Motion on the table is to amend the main motion to remove the agenda item 13C temporary employing E-Wager scales from the proposed agenda, any opposition? Seeing none, the motion passes.
I move to approve the proposed, the proposed agenda and a consent agenda as amended.
Do a second.
A second.
The motion as we made and seconded, any public comment? Any board comment?
Can I comment on the one item? I think, I just wanted to, to recognize on item 5C, which is on the consent agenda, the opening the box of culturally responsive STEAM education for middle school in LA. I'd just like to commend staff on this, cultural program director, Jewel LeBlanc, you know, and partners such as Sika Tribe of Alaska. Also recognize the work of the former cultural program director, Nancy Douglas, in moving this work forward. I think this is a great example of how district staff are going above and beyond to address some of our financial shortfalls, or some of our, our budget crunch, and, you know, just looking for additional ways to fi, to find money to, to give good programming to kids. This one is about culturally responsive STEAM education, bringing traditional ecological knowledge into, into our schools, so, again, I would like to, to commend staff from administration all down, the cultural program, Sika High School, Pacific High School, Blatchley Middle School, the areas of our school district that are, are moving this, this work forward with Sea Alaska Heritage Institute and Sika Tribe of Alaska. And I guess, last but not least, thank you to Sea Alaska Heritage Institute for providing this opportunity for our students.
Thank you, Mr. Gavon, for those comments, and I fully agree with your statement. Moving on to, oh, we do have to vote. There was no opposition, motion passes. Could I, could I state that for the record, I was right? My apologies, I grew up with a helicopter mother, and she spoke for me for half of my life, so, usually I keep to myself. All right, moving on to, uh, item six, special reports, government to government. Do we have any, um, government to government reports? Do we have any government to government reports? Is it LaCrisha?
Everything is definitely with Jewel tonight, so I was gonna wait, because I'm sorry.
Oh, man. Well, at least my eyes work. Can I tell that to my daughter? She told me I was almost 50. My eyes still work. So, moving on to item number seven, recognitions. 7A Halatseini Students of the Month. This is my most favorite time of the school board meeting, and I speak right now. So, in meeting with Superintendent Hauser and Dawn, in one of our meetings, I had remarked that since Sika School District, we have amazing students with sports, DDF, we have a great number of students who have exceptional GPAs, we have honor band and honor choir and all of the above. But, in looking back into my own history and my own experience going to school, I always felt that a lot of the students who were not on the basketball team, or on the volleyball team, or who ran track and field, who, or who had the ability to sit up and speak in front of people, they still held the spirit of community and strength, and they gained their own perspective and voice in their own way. And I felt that education has sometimes overlooked that. And while it's not, you know, nowadays, people say, "We just give out participation awards." No, this is not it. Halatseini Student of the Month Award goes to students who uplift what we here in Sika value and what makes our community so special. Because when we live here, I have experienced over and over, the community that we have, the people that come together when we need it, they do come together, they do lift each other up. And we don't look at grade point averages, we don't look at, you know, if you were the fastest runner, or your grade, you know, your points per game. You can tell that was in sports. Anyways, it is that spirit within community that creates, a will around a community that is whole and that creates strength within itself. So, the Student of the Month Award highlights just that. Students who hold Halatseini within their heart and passes it on to others and creates within them that community that Sika loves to celebrate. And, you know, we're raising the next generation of Sikkans who go out into the world, and so this is why I love this time. So, I'll give it over to Mr. Hauser.
Thank you very much, President. We have some certificates here that we want to recognize, so I'm gonna go ahead and grab the certificates, I'm gonna get this, and we're gonna bring some students up here. Luckily, we got a chance to hear from some of the students already when they were sharing some good things a little bit earlier, so. Transition, get the certificates. I'm actually going to hand them out. So, we're gonna go ahead and recognize some students, so I'm gonna go ahead and turn it over to Mr. Geller.
Okay, Vivian Collins. Vivian, eighth grader at Blatchley Middle School. She is kind and respectful to students and staff. She participates in student activities and athletics. Vivian constantly pursues excellence in her academic work and is always willing to help belt students. We are proud to have Vivian as a student at Blatchley Middle School. Thank you, Vivian.
Angela McFarlane, Sika High School, Halatseini Student of the Month. Come on down. The qualities of Halatseini, responsibility, compassion, and engagement. Angela actively participates in class and is always engaged, no matter the topic or class. She always hands in her work on time and is a meticulous note taker. As a school citizen, Angela works well with all students and always has a kind word. Her smile and pleasant attitude are appreciated throughout their school. Angela is a great role model, and Sika High School is proud to have her as one of our students. Neo Christ, Keet Gushinheen, Halatseini Student of the Month.
Neo is a fifth grade student in Mrs. Graham's classroom. Time and time again this year, Neo has shown incredible perseverance. No matter what obstacles Neo faces, he takes them on with a positive attitude, kindness, and pride in his work. Not only has Neo stayed 100% on top of his schoolwork, but he is always willing to help his classmates. He is an excellent example of the Keet Gushinheen core values, respectful, responsible, safe, and kind. We are so impressed with this student.
All right, Clover Snelling, from Pacific High School. Clover is the Student of the Month for October at Pacific High. Clover is a dedicated student, talented artist of many mediums, and a culture bearer for their Klinkit leg of heritage. They prepared an opening welcome for the tri-school Mary Paltova event at Henscombe High School on Indigenous Peoples' Day and represented Paltova with a Klinkit paddle of their own design. The design included raven and eagle for balance, as well as fish scales to celebrate representative Paltova's commitment to the sustainability of our natural resources. Clover is an ambassador of our Pacific High School values and exemplifies perseverance, honesty, and stewardship both in and out of school.
Let's let it low for a second. Do you have anything on the same question?
Everything's slow tonight.
Gunaltschiish, ha yi adi. Clover Yuchet Duasak. Thank you all for coming, my name is Clover. I was honored to have been asked to make a gift for Representative Paltova. I was given a blank paddle to work with, and I started sketching right away. I started with the lovebirds. One side has eagle and the other has raven. Their beaks meet in the middle for a little kiss. In Shinkit culture, lovebirds represent balance. Above them, I painted crescent moons, these illustrate intention and empowerment. Moving down to the handle, I made shiny fish scales, an ode to Mary Paltova's work towards protecting our fish and our fisheries. And finally, the paddle itself, holding the date Paltova was sworn in at the base. The paddle is a symbol of moving forward, which I feel is especially predominant today. Ach tuu alhake, ach en gunaltschiish. Thank you very much. As I said before, Clover Yuchet Duasak. Yeel nachat siti, ganach teeli ayachat, chalkan kwandach ayachat. Gunaltschiish ach eif yi sakhay.
How about one more round of applause for all of our Halatseini Students of the Month? We'll go into service, so we'll start here, we'll go over here. Big smile right there. All right, big smile back. Now we're making it around, now we're at, what would this be, 11 o'clock maybe? All right, we're gonna get over to 10 o'clock here in just a second, okay, we got 10? Okay, now we go over to 10 o'clock over there. Everybody's got a big smile. Perfect. How about one more round?
Congratulations, everyone. Clover, that was an amazing paddle. Your Klinkit is amazing as well. I'm envious. Moving on to Subenby, we're recognizing the Sika High School cross-country team, cross-country team. Please come up. The Sika High School Board's cross-country team was runner-up at the recent Division Two State Championship in Anchorage. The girls team placed fourth overall, placing in the top ten. Girls, Anna Prushen, first place Claire Mullin, second, and Claire Mullin, second place. Boys, Alan Wyland, fourth place, Silas Demmer, fifth place, Trey Demmer, eighth place, and Connor Hitchcock, ninth place. Congratulations.
And, gotta have one for the coaches too. Now, I know I said this earlier, but I would love to hear from a coach, would you like to say something about the team, or Jeremy, what's the conversation about this amazing team that we have here?
So, I love coaching because I love watching kids work really hard, and I love when it all comes together. And at State, it really came together for everybody, and it was super, super fantastic to watch. Anna and Claire finished one-two, was like a once-in-a-lifetime for a coach to see that and just how it come together, and a senior year was amazing. And then, the boys to get second overall was also very, very awesome. Lots of seniors on the team, but super excited for the future.
Some of you may or may not know, but oftentimes when we head up to State, our biggest competition is the private schools. And this year, Grace Christian, which is a private school in Anchorage, had been dominating almost everybody, the race. And I, I don't know if you guys all know this, but I had ran into the Grace Christian coach in the parking lot before the race, and she goes, "Oh, how are your boys doing?" And I'm like, "Yeah, they're doing all right." And I don't think they knew we were coming, because we were within two points of beating Grace Christian, who is the three-time State Champ now. So, it was just a testament to the kids and how they raced up there, it was so fun to watch.
We'll start in the center, and then we'll do the same thing, we'll all look over, so it's always odd when you have the picture and the eyes are looking in the wrong direction. All right, we're gonna start over on what is R, right side, big smiles, cameras out of there. All right, pivot, turn back. Very nice, okay, give it a little bit more, about that 11 o'clock. All right, we got a proud dad over there in the corner, we gotta make sure we give him that opportunity. Kinda looks familiar to me. All right, how about another round of applause? And I would also like to say, another round of applause for the coaches. The work that they do behind the scenes to make sure everything goes, you know, smooth, and the students have the support, and it's really an amazing job that they do. So, Jeremy Johnson, thank you guys so much for everything, we really appreciate it. Another round of applause for the coaches. Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. Let's do this. Do you guys wanna just run through, give your name really fast, and if you have just a favorite moment? Yeah, pressure's on, you gotta do it, I'm like saying, I have to have some, again, really fast.
Okay, I'm Pomon, and my favorite moment was, I think, at State, we all came across the line pretty tired, and Jade goes, "I just got a PR." And if you guys don't know, that's a really hard course to get a PR on, so I think that was pretty cool.
I'm Marina Marley, and I really liked nary and... I mean, I really enjoyed Peter's word trip.
I'm Jade Lynn Cubic, and my favorite part was when we had, like, team spaghetti dinner in the hotel room.
I'm Natalie Hall, and I really liked our girls team bonding activities, like making shirts. I'm Anna Prushen, and this was my first year having a full girls team, and so that was really fun.
I'm Connor, and my favorite part was crossing the finish line and knowing that it was over.
I'm James, and one of my favorite moments was first day junior year, and I grew up on the track.
I'm Hank Maxwell, and my favorite moment, how many times Connor watched cards?
I'm Trey Demmer, and my favorite moment is probably just doing a bunch of dumb stuff with the boys team.
And my favorite memory is also James throwing up on the track.
Congratulations, everyone. I'm just gonna ask you, that was the paddle switch. Kudos to them for waiting so long. They're amazing.
I thought they were all here for a meeting.
I was still gonna say it, someday, someday they will be, I have faith. Alright, moving on to persons to be heard. Persons to be heard is an opportunity for members of the public to speak to the board about a topic that is not on the agenda. As these are not agenda items, no board deliberation or action will occur in response. Questions or board clarification may be posed by board members. The board may choose to refer items to the superintendent or designate for further action. A standard time limit for comments will be three minutes unless otherwise stated by the board president with consent of the board. If timer is used, the sound will indicate when time expires. All comments must be respectful and charges or complaints against specific employees are not permitted per Alaska State statute. Members of the public are referred to Board Policies 1312, 1312.1, 131, 1312.2, 1312.3 and associated administrative regulations, as well as the Board Bylaws 9323A. For information about how to lodge complaints, speakers are also asked to please state their full name for the record prior to speaking. Are there any persons to be heard tonight? Seeing them. Moving on. To item nine, school highlights. Sitka High School.
Hi. So we're gonna just go over some highlights from October with this being November 1st. And starting with who we just recognized, our cross-country teams, who were amazing and you heard lots of great things about them. I'd just like to reiterate that they're a great group on campus, they're campus leaders in the classroom, in the hallways, on the sports fields. And I know we recognized Coach Smith and Coach Strong and they do a fantastic job and I will try to highlight all of our activities tonight and what's been going on right now, but I also wanna give a big thanks to Rich Groupup, our activities director, because all of this travel and all of these, the logistics of the home things and everything that's going on right now, he's doing a wonderful job keeping us on track and getting the kids where they need to be and on time and it's a lot. And he's working really hard and we appreciate that, so. Right now, actually, right now, the region volleyball tournament has started at Sitka High. The first round is tonight. And we're playing Mount Edgemont. Coach Xavier Allen is leading that. This is a best-of-three series. So tomorrow night we'll be at Mount Edgemont at 7:00 PM. We've recently recognized our seniors on the volleyball team. We have three this year, Ava Brady, Andrea and Michelle Wiener. And so that's going on. Swimming, super excited, they did great at Regions this past weekend and they are heading to the State Championships this next weekend. The thing about swimming that you may not realize is that swimmers don't have different divisions. So cross-country, for example, they have three different divisions by size of school and we compete in Division II. And so that's why you see more, like, it's amazing that Anna won State, she's Division II State Champion, there are actually three different Division State Champions. In swimming, there's one division. So, we compete against all the big schools and so when you see the student athletes, especially in swimming, you're seeing them competing against everyone in the entire state. And so, we're wishing a big luck to the six swimmers that we're sending up there. Coach Divine and Tracy Karang are doing a great job with that group. We actually had, Emma Gassman was amazing this past weekend, she won the 100 back and the 100 fly. And so, we have big wishes for that group. The girls' team finished third place at Regions and the boys' teams finished fourth, but they're heading to State this weekend at Bartlett, so we wish them all best. We were very busy this past weekend hosting the Sitka Slam Wrestling Tournament. All of Southeast was here in Sitka for that. Our school was full, almost every classroom, somebody was sleeping in. And Coach Mike Callahan is leading the charge in that. We had two overall winners in the weight divisions, Evander Elixman and Kai Davis. We had several other really top finishers. Wrestling team's on its way to ACS this weekend for a very big tournament in Anchorage, so we wish them luck. And then DDF, they were off this past weekend, but they're heading to Haynes next weekend and I would list every winner in the last meet, which was in Malakalla, but the meeting would need to be in like another hour, so. Well, I think we're gonna wait until we have like the Region meet results and then the State stuff, because they are yet again dominating all other performers. And certainly not least, the music program. I just have to commend Andrew Haynes and first off, the learning curve that he came back into, coming back into the classroom and just the stamina that this guy has is amazing. So, we recently had our fall concert in the PAC. The students marched in the last day parade and we also just participated in Honor Festival and we're about to send a group of students to the All-State Music. I will recognize those students, so it's Tyler Address, Theo Everson, Justin Haynes, Emily Blackman, Quentin Newsom and then Josh Gluth as an alternate. So, busy, busy, busy for activities. We also, Clover's paddle was incredible, that was actually a gift from all three high schools to Mary Palatola. We very much enjoyed the joint assembly over at Mount Edgemont. It's the first assembly since I've been in Sitka that we had all together as one and we left there feeling like it was really successful and we enjoyed that. The next bit of the slideshow may seem like a Felix Myers slideshow, because he was such a part of everything, but as was mentioned earlier, we were able to again send delegates to the Student Government Convention over in Wasilla and our two students absolutely dominated, so not that I'm surprised I'm not, but we really have a lot going for us in this realm and it's gonna be exciting to see what happens next, because so Kylie, as the Region Five delegate, will continue in that role. And then, but Felix, as the, I don't know if you understand what the SVEED rep is, but that is actually the student rep on the State School Board that will meet in Juneau. So he is the junior rep this year and will move into the senior rep position next year and actually be a voting member on the State School Board, so congratulations. Thank you. It was super nice to see us participate in that again. It's been several years since we were able to send students to this and so we don't know where the Spring Convention is yet, but maybe, you never know, it might be close to home, we'll see. So, good job. And then, so it's Spirit Week this week and we had, we celebrated Halloween yesterday. Today was Disney Day, so we all had our Mickey Mouse ears on. And then tomorrow is gonna be Pink Out to recognize the Breast Cancer Awareness Month that just ended in October, so lots of fun. And, I had to throw in that congratulations, Mr. McCarty has been named the Region Five Assistant Principal of the Year.
You didn't know we were gonna be doing this and purposely left him off of the earlier because I figured he'd probably make some excuse about having to be at the high school while region volleyball's going on, so we just wanted to take this moment to recognize Jay Tyler. Congratulations for being there. We appreciate it. Would you like to say a few words? Everyone else is happy too, so.
Well, I mean, cliche, but like, it takes a team and, you know, it's nice to be recognized, but it's the entire school, it's the student, it's the rest of the leadership team, so it's very nice, but it's, we're a team effort and so, I guess, thank you, but it's all of us.
Had to throw that last slide in, Mr. McCarty does a great job for us. Even when he's on crutches, he's been on crutches for his, we hope your knee heals soon, we really hope your knee heals soon, but he's still, he's doing a good job, we're just bringing this up to him now. That's it. Anyone have any questions? And if you don't mind, I'm gonna go to the volleyball. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hello, good to see you all. I'm gonna let a video play our highlights, what this will be. So while Tyler's getting that going, I think, I think the biggest highlight for me personally is we have hired on a substitute cook for our breakfast and lunch program, which is fantastic. I spent almost a month doing the breakfast and lunch program as a chef would and I have learned firsthand the amount of work that goes into that in terms of menu planning, grocery lists, doing the shopping, doing the ordering. And so, it was really nice for me to be a part of a whole system, to be able to learn about what it takes. We have an AmeriCorps, that has been an AmeriCorps position for a number of years and for the last few years it's been, we haven't been able to get an AmeriCorps to fill the position and I think primarily that's because of how big the position is. It's starving out just as a lunch program in a small kitchen within our old building before the remodel. During the remodel, we expanded the kitchen into a large commercial kitchen, but the staffing has stayed the same, so it really, and then we added the breakfast component to our school breakfast and lunch program and so it is definitely a feat to be able to do that day-to-day, week-to-week and so I am thrilled. Today was the first, I've been telling the new chef that is gradual release and she did breakfast all by herself today and I was just kind of off to the side during lunch production, doing some of my other work in case they needed consultation, but she's working with four students that we have in the cooking class and they're just doing really great, so it's really nice to have someone else in the kitchen, but it was, it was very important to us to keep that program going in the spirit that we always have in terms of the from-scratch meals, using as much from our school garden as possible and so it's a huge highlight to have somebody in that position now and I have a big stack of backlog work as principal that now I'm gonna start sifting through and so, I don't know if that's a highlight, but it's really nice to be back in my office, so. Last month, well, I guess I should start with last spring, the NEA Alaska President, Tom Claymar, he came around, when there's a new president, they usually do circulate around to the schools in the different regions, he came by at Pacific High School, spent some time and walked away from that experience, wanting to learn more about Pacific High School, but also wanting to celebrate the program that we have at Pacific High School. So he reached out and asked if we would find having a film crew come down this fall and capture some of what we do, because he acknowledged that it's a very unique program. It's a unique program within the state as well as within Sitka. And so, there were three days in September that a couple of folks from their marketing department, I guess I wanna say, they had someone who was filming and then another person who was interviewing, came and spent three days at the school with students and with staff. And so, they put this video together, it just went live yesterday on the NEA Alaska website and so I thought this, they did a fantastic job encapsulating the spirit of what we do at Pacific High School and how unique our program is and so I wanted to share this with you all for the highlights tonight. Sitka is a place where life is purposeful. We're active in subsistence as a lifestyle, but we're also surrounded by culture, we're on kinket, on knee. It just seems as though what we do each day has a purpose towards our future. My name is Mandy Summer and I'm the Principal of Pacific High School. Aside from the principal, I can be a cook, I can be counselor, sometimes I can step into the role of a pseudo-parent.
My name is Matt Groan and I'm a high school social studies teacher. I teach grades nine through 12 here at Pacific High School in Sitka. The mission of Pacific High School is to take learners from every community and help them access the future that they want. We meet every learner where they are, we help them grow, we help them access the resource that they need, or sometimes we help them graduate and go right on to the future. At Pacific High School, we offer a really wide range of classes. We do everything from Mount Alaska Studies subsistence class, where we catch, fry, fillet, smoke, jog salmon and go through the entire process. A lot of students want to fish, a lot of students want to go out and engage in all those activities, but they don't have the resource, they don't have the mentorship and so it provides that opportunity for students to really engage in a constructive way to spend that downtime. And sometimes that even translates into a career where a student goes, "I really like fishing, maybe I should do this forever." In the afternoon, I have a government class and we are fortunate to have really involved government here in Sitka from both the tribal perspective and the local perspective and so we really get to kind of run with what students want, we get to really maximize the resource that is here in Sitka and really provide a truly place-based education.
My name is Clover, I'm a senior and I go to Pacific High School. Pacific High School is meaningful to me because Pacific brings in so much community from like the culture here in Sitka, like I'm Shingit, so I get to still experience my culture within school. Pacific High is your family and is a family for a lot of students.
The garden came to be just as one small raised bed box in the front of the school and it was used for English classes. And then, students became really interested in planting seeds and watching them grow. Ten years later, we have a 24-by-48-foot greenhouse going up and we're harvesting produce to eat in our school lunch program.
I'm Audrey Riles, the room, I'm junior and I go at Pacific High School. Pacific High School is special because the staff here, they're more connected with the students more than from my experience from other schools. I chose the gardening program because I actually never learned how to garden when I first started doing it, but I was actually, I myself was like learning how to like plant carrots or just like plant flowers, potatoes, chard, kale, and it was very fun.
The produce that we grow in the garden, we grow a lot of greens because we serve salad and wraps, we grow a lot of root crops, potatoes, garlic, turnips this year, we'll do onions in the future, staple crops that have been grown here and been successful here in Southeast Alaska and that we know that we're gonna use in our school lunch program.
My hope for the future is that our My hope for the future is that our model continues. I hope we can service more students. If we could also have place-based school all the way down to K through 12, I think that would be fantastic. I definitely appreciate traditional education. I just like having those parallel with other options for learners that don't necessarily fit into that mold. And I hope that those models are accessible.
My hope for our students is that they become knowledgeable and empowered and community-minded so that they become contributing. And experience success in a way that's valuable to them. The only other piece that I would, I'd like to add and part of this, just because I do need to go. You know, another highlight for us, we just wrapped up this elementary class and I've talked about in the video. Tristan Gavon helped us out with that and was an integral part of that class. And seeing where the students want to take that class after having some very intentional conversations about what their role can be, both within their school and within their community. And so I know that it's coming up for first reading that we're talking about in addition of a Pacific High rep to the school board. This is something that we've been working on for a number of years. And the time is ripe, I guess, in the spirit of gardens and harvesting and that type of thing. So you know, I just want to appreciate Tristan and all the time that he's spent helping us get that moving forward. And I'm really looking forward to see where this may go. And we're having the opportunity for Pacific High School students to also participate in dialogue and provide some insight and feedback as well. And so I know that's coming up later, but I just wanted to express some appreciation for that right now.
Thank you, Mandy. Moving on to item 10, reports and presentations. 10A Cultural Department.
Hello. Anshkunuk Yuchat Duasak. My Lingitt name is Anshkunuk and my English name is Joel Alonka. I'm the cultural director for the district. And on the agenda, it said Jessica Christensen would be with me today, but I'll get into this a little bit later. We were not ready yet with some of our updates, so we're hoping to come back in December and do that. So I have my partner in crime here today. Do you want to introduce yourself?
My English name is LaKrisha. I am the STA Cultural Resources Education and Employment Director, which means I get to co-direct the SICA Native Education Program alongside Joel Alonka.
So today we work closely together on everything we're about to share, which I thought why it's important to bring her here today. And every time I do updates, a lot of what we do wouldn't be possible without the partnership with the SICA Tribe of Alaska. And so I just want to honor that and recognize that every time I get a chance to speak. And also honor and recognize that anything that I'm saying today is because of all the hard work that went in the last 10 years with the previous cultural director, with SICA Tribe of Alaska and all their work. And I just get to be here and support that work and further it by what we hear from our students and families. So with that, I'll get into some of the grants that we currently are working with to support our work. The first one is the IEA Title VI Grant. And that grant currently pays for our two cultural paras, one at Baranoff and one at Blatchley. It also pays for the language teacher, Robbie Littlefield, at Blatchley SICA High and most recently Pacific High has been added to that. The other grant we have is the Margaret Cardle philanthropy grant, the Macatee Grant, which is wrapping up. And hopefully in December, we can come back and share more about that because that was a pretty significant grant we had in our district. And so we'll have a video to share with you and some updates on that later on. The other grant we work with is STEPS and that one is a pre-K through 12th grade, commonly known as the Cradle to Career Grant. So it really works on fostering healthy communities and healthy districts that work together in collaboration with the community. And so with that, we've been able to have culture responsive in services. This last August, we were hosting a Creating a Sense of Belonging in Service that Mr. Howther talked about earlier this fall. It supports the early childhood coalition revitalizing family engagement events, which was pretty, I should say, mitigated through the last two years. So we're now trying to get it back to in-person events. It supports post-secondary work and social emotional learning curriculum support. And so we get to support the, all the schools in our district with implementing strategies, tools, resources, practices to help further their social emotional learning curriculum. We also work with the Lots of Council on the Arts Grant and there's three under that. The first one is New Visions, which this year will be sending our administrative team, or a few of them, to the Codiak Arts Retreat specifically for admin. We have the Youth Cultural Heritage Grant, which had supported two of our camps over the summertime. And we were able to bring in guest instructors and have a robust summer programming. And then Arts in Schools, we used to do that pre-2020 and I guess pre-2019. And are now bringing it back into our schools with the collaboration of the SICA Fine Arts Camp. And then last is the Sea Alaska Heritage Institute. And they support the Culture Responsive Steam at the Middle School Grant, which that's not the right name, but that was my quick note. The Traditional Ecological Knowledge at Pacific High and SICA High. And Box of Treasures, which supports our traditional arts teachers at SICA High and Pacific High. And I'll go into this a little bit further in the next few slides. But I do want to note, if you know me at all, I do not like worry slides. And so it's really hard to not put a lot of words on this because we were doing so much pre-K through post-secondary. So I just want to make note that this was very hard to trim down what we're doing and I did not want to trim down. I wanted to make sure we were capturing all of it. But I'm still trying to not have 20 slides in this, did not capture everything. So I apologize if I have missed anything. So in school, we have a lot of different programs and different happenings. First is WuJin, which the last few years was mitigated. It was remote, virtual. And so this is the first year back doing a morning class. That's really exciting. We have our traditional art classes with Pacific High and SICA High students, which previously mentioned on the last slide, is funded by the Sea Alaska Heritage Institute. And with those traditional arts classes, we are offering dual credit so students can participate in UAS credits and high school credits. There's a collaboration with SICA High's Fab Lab with Mr. Charlie Scolpa and Mike Vieira. A collaboration with Baranoff Signage, which is also with Mr. Charlie. And that's in the works currently to have more form line and improve their signage in the front of their school. There is a cultural steam teacher at Blatchley Middle School, also funded by SHI. And this position had been happening the last few years. And so now Kelly Buxton's in it furthering that work and continuing it. There's two traditional ecological knowledge teachers. One is at Pacific High and one is at SICA High. And in this new realm and secondary, it's been really exciting working with Caitlin Woolsey because she was the previous steam teacher at Blatchley and then moved up to SICA High. And with her previous experience, getting to dive into the district and see what teachers' needs are. We came up with a few goals together, what would we like to see happen through that position? And so we are working together to create a cultural specialist request form. Because often we have teachers, admin, any staff really wanting to bring in people or bring in lessons or activities without much substance. And while it is through good intent, sometimes we miss the purpose of why we want to bring people in. And so this request form is going to help staff really analyze, why do I want this person or this thing in my classroom? What will that help my students do? So that's what we're working on. And in tandem, we're also working on a cultural specialist agreement. Once you bring in people into your classroom, it's sometimes hard to figure out what your role as a teacher is. And oftentimes for the specialist coming in, it's hard for them to understand what their role is. So this agreement form would be a mutual contract that would really help both authorities understand what is their role in that classroom with students. And then lastly, we are working on the Lingitt Language being embedded throughout the school, throughout SICA High. So it's exciting to start seeing that come together, which is a part of the strategic planning process. We also have a language teacher who is Robbie Littlefield and has been on us for a very long time now. And she is teaching sixth through 12th grade. As I mentioned earlier, she has taken on now teaching at Pacific High as well. So Blatchley Middle School, SICA High and Pacific High. And then we have a PH at Pacific High School, bicycles classes, form line, carving, tool making and beading. So they get those every Friday. We're also working on a cultural scope and sequence, developing it currently. And so that's really taking all the big areas of traditional knowledge and breaking it down into how are students accessing this throughout their career in the district? So when they enter pre-K even, what are they receiving and how does that build on throughout 12th grade? And one thing that's really common in our culture is it spirals. It's never linear. It's never this, learn that and now you can do this and that. However, we think it's important to start westernizing it or linearizing it so we don't lose really big elements. And we've seen that with different teaching, grade level teams who leave the district with all this knowledge. Once they leave, it's gone. And so this is an effort to have the district own more of what is being taught culturally and what age and allow it to live on beyond just a group of teachers who own that. So I'm really excited to see that come together. And we've been working on it for the last two years. It's not an easy even project, so stay tuned. And we're also working on our kids, oh, sorry, I know I'm speaking wrong. We have art kits that are kindergarten through fifth grade. And these art kits, in lieu of not having art teachers that are rebuilding, are helping teachers access the arts and enable them to teach it in a way that is productive and connects to their English language arts and math curriculum. And so it's allowing many doors to open that weren't there before as far as students accessing the arts. And we've, we'll share more about this in December as well. But I think we've heard a lot of feedback from teachers on how they can use these art kits without a lot of art experience. And their students are getting a really robust art lesson that does connect to their curriculum. And then the last thing that we're working on, not even the last thing on this slide, last thing is an ACT website, Arts Culture Technology website. And this is a digital library, it's how to explain it, that jurors or community members or students can access to get resources from digital to physical. So it's very robust as well and we'll share more about that in December. We can go to the next slide. Okay, so more in-school programs and happenings. We have grade level and department collaborations happening with the cultural department. Specifically, too, I wanted to highlight was UAS and DMS shop class field trip, which is allowing shop students at Blatchley Middle School to explore this post-secondary career. And they get to go through UAS and tour around their CTEs departments. And then we also have a second grade Lingitt celebration in the works. That was happening for many years prior to 2020. And this is going to be the first year we're getting it back up and going similar to how it was in the past. We've also been working with Reach Homeschool. They've been, I want to say on the outskirts, but more so through transitions, just not always involved. So I feel really excited about involving our homeschool students as well and what we're doing in the cultural department. We also, and I'm very, very, very excited about this one. We were able to send four of our SICA High School math teachers to attend the Raven's Tail weaving in Juneau. And it's really exciting, yes, because we haven't necessarily had a full team like this ever in the district be able to go and attend something outside of their department. But then have them have the chance to see how they could bring it into their department. And so I heard from SHI today that there was really great conversations happening with the math teachers of what this looks like and how they can make lessons around this Raven's Tail weaving. So I'm really proud and happy that we were able to send these math teachers to this conference or this training. And then we have SHS, PHS and NEHS Assembly for Indigenous Peoples' Day, which we already went into, so I won't go into that one too much. And then we have our cultural paras and I did want to highlight what they are doing mainly because we are seeing that our Title VI grant funding is being significantly reduced due to families not signing the form and lower enrollment. And so when that happens, we are losing money and all this money directly goes towards the cultural paras and language teachers. So I think that's really important to highlight what they are doing district-wide to support all students. So specifically math and ULA support. They help with cultural integration and co-creation support. They are culture class instructors, so they help with after-school programming. They're a family support. They often can connect with families when staff can't or they can be a bridge from home to school. And they can share a lot of insight on our, some of our families are also Canadian families specifically in their age capacities. So in tandem with that, they are social emotional support for many of our students, especially the fifth to sixth grade transition. A lot of the kiddos who have seen Ms. Erin Ralph Brochard in their second through fifth grade after-school class, go to middle school and see her face and it's always been a really comforting, reassuring thing when they see her. We've seen that every single year. And then lastly, they have traditional knowledge and language support that they share with staff. And then we have an AmeriCorps position who is working specifically on the Lingitt language projects with Keke Sheen. She's an intervention support, so helping with math and a little bit of reading. And then she's also a culture class aide, so she helps out in our after-school programming. And she's also supporting our website as she has a degree in user design. So we're using those skill sets to help us improve our website, specifically the SSD ACT website. And then lastly, we are demanding on the newsletter, which you may have received. And that's to capture all the things that are going on because as you can see, every month there's a lot. And it's just the beginning of November and this is everything that's going on this school year. So I think this newsletter is a great way to keep everybody involved in what's all happening across the whole district. All right, next slide. And then we have our after-school programs. So we have culture class, which I've mentioned, and that's kindergarten through 12th grade. We also have four NEHS students participating this year, which I believe is the most we've had.
Yeah, it's been probably four or five years since I've had EdgeGum students able to participate given COVID mitigation rules not really lining up across districts. So this is our first year returning with EdgeGum students as well and we've got four students signed up so far. And I just wanted to say that Joel Alonka over at EdgeGum has done a great job of connecting us to the students who are really interested in learning a little bit more about the Lingitt culture. So she's been a great kind of bridge.
Thank you. Yeah, so culture class is happening two days a week for all those grade levels. So we split it up Monday through Thursday. And then we also have a culmination event, December 2nd and May 12th, that I'll send follow-up emails on as we get closer. We're also hosting new this year is Open Studio, 2nd through 12th grade. Have the chance for students to come during their off culture class days and share in arts, hang out, have a safe space. And then we're also doing drumming on Fridays, not 2nd through 12th grade. It's normally been 6th through 12th grade, so expanding it to 2nd through 12th grade has been exciting. And then lastly is the STA grandchildren's room. The district is not funding this, but we fully support it and often collaborate. They, this room is helping support 6th through 12th grade specifically with their academics, social, emotional and cultural support. And one thing that we wanted to note is that they are doing a lot of events for Native American Heritage Month. And Mr. Khan will be sharing a event calendar for the month. And then also specifically a QR code signup for students to sign up for events happening in the grandchildren's room. And to go off of that a little bit too, there's two new positions that were hired to support the grandchildren's rooms, which are the STA Student Support Service positions. which are the STA student support service positions. And so they've been working closely with me and Chukon and making sure that our students are, this room is really for them. So I'm excited to see it grow even more over the next few years. So lastly, I was just going to share some highlights over the last several months. So first, in Snap summer camps. We had six camps this summer, 1st through 12th grade. We explored harvesting, processing, stewardship, salmon, podcasting, language, stop motion. We had collaborations with Sika Trail Works, Office of State Council on the Arts, Rassism Foundation, Sika School District, and Sika Charle Valasca. I have some photos up here of students exploring podcasting together, helping each other, going out to the Fioho, harvesting. Mr. Charlie's leading them in form line, and they're listening to stories. Did you want to share anything?
I just wanted to share one of my favorite aspects of the summer program this year was the culmination event at the end of each camp. So our camps are generally just four or five days, just the afternoons. But one of the highlights for me has been that the Friday afternoon is really a family day. And so a lot of the photos you're seeing happening out at Kajahin are actually students and families were welcomed. And so a lot of, almost, geez, most of our Fridays were spent with families. And I think that helped us build a great foundation for the school year as well.
Yes, and so these camps are, right now, run by staff who also run our in-school and after-school programming. So something I like to share with people is that we are year-round and very busy. There's never a slow time. We have to be really intentional to make slow time in our department. Otherwise, we'd be going nonstop every single year. So we try to put the time for us to slow down a little bit. But the reality is that the staff that I work with there are doing things year-round, and it is a lot full schedule. So it's pretty neat to see six camps come together with the same staff. Last summer, it was a big accomplishment for us. All right, next slide. The next highlight I wanted to share was just on the school year in general, what we've been doing the last several, last two months, three months. And I wanted to share this quote that came from a parent from one of our classes. And I think it's really important, personally, it's very important because I feel like oftentimes I'm a little not native enough to learn the culture, or I don't look native enough. And so knowing that that's something that I have heard, it's something our students are still hearing. And it was really neat to hear this quote come from this parent that just shares how much it means to them that the culture is accessible within the school day, not just where they have to be native enough or after school. So the parent says, "I have no info to get him in CIB or help him connect on that level to his heritage. Having worked for tries for years, I know and respect the importance of being connected and centered in culture. He's getting this in your class. When he talks about your class, he's happy." And so this quote shares that the student doesn't have anything that legally says that he is native, but very much is, and gets to have that culture and that feeling of belonging in his classroom because we've all made it possible for these classes to be accessible in school day. And so going off of that, I wanted to share a few things that are happening. You'll see two photos of student artwork, and that was from Mr. Mark Sixby's classes at the high school. And he currently is teaching at UAS in this beautiful room at UAS. So students get to go over there for his class. And then Caitlin Woolsey, who is our traditional ecological knowledge teacher at the high school, has allowed kids to explore harvesting, processing, and so they may jam together. And then in the middle picture, they are listening to Mr. Chuck Miller talk about his experience podcasting. And then they recently, last week, invited a bunch of us in to listen to their podcasts. And so it's a very neat experience. And then the other picture is a student beading in the Pacific High's life skills class.
Her very first pair of earrings, and they turned out amazing.
You can see them right above the triangle there. And then we have Representative Piltoya's speech with the three high schools, which again, I want to reiterate how incredible that was. I wasn't there that day, but as a district SSD alum, I never once have the chance to be with all three schools. And so seeing this happen now for these students, I think is really incredible and would love to see this continue in the future. All right, next slide. And then last is just another slide of some pictures of things happening those last few months. We have students using the grandchildren's room, students out after school in culture class, on the trails, harvesting. And then we have students participating in NYO during Indigenous Peoples' Day, and a family cruise happening where they took the elementary boat out.
I just wanted to share that both center photos are around the KGHD students gathering tea. And so the week after that, they had a tea party where they got to taste the two different teas that they harvested and processed.
So this is a, or shadow, I guess, to when we come back again and share where we're going. We have some very big grants wrapping up. And losing a lot of that funding has made us question, what do we prioritize as a district? Where are we going? Because if we have to own this and we don't have funding coming in, what pieces do we want to make sure stick in our district? And so last spring, Jessica Christensen and I hosted a meeting with staff throughout the district and STA staff to come together and talk about in arts, culture, and technology within those three realms, what is it that we want to keep? What is it that we want to say we really value this and this is what matters? And so it's a lot to read, so I don't expect us to do it right now. But I did want to share with you that what we're doing going forward and all the things we're putting in place now in this year is out of this vision that came from staff. So in December, when we share more, we'll capture a little bit more of where we're going in response to what we've heard and talk about all these elements more. And I will send this vision word to you all individually so you can look at it as well. And with that, this is really important to me. Again, as a district alum, I didn't get a chance to learn the language in the school. I was very into sports, and so I never had the opportunity to opt into Snap classes. So I didn't learn the language. And so now as an adult, I get to learn it. And so I'm going to say this to you, but I hope you know that, Mr. Chukon, it's there, helping me learn the language, but I also invite you all to try saying these words too. If I can do it, you can do it. And it's okay to not say it right. So we must chish akhe, yi sa akhi. Thank you for listening.
Are there questions?
Are there any questions? I just want to say to you guys, before you guys leave, seeing your presentation is very heartwarming for myself. I had a very similar experience growing up with you. There was hardly any cultural education within the schools. Actually, my experience was very crude. They'd say, "Are you native?" And if you were, you stood up. And they're like, "Okay, now go learn about yourself. Leave the room." And we spent 15 minutes learning something that someone read in a book. So you're very in-depth, very well-put-together presentation of your hard work that's definitely going out into the community and being passed down through generations within the schools and into the homes of our families is very well and very much appreciated. So musti kuyana. Take good. All right, going on to item 11, Board Member Reports. Mr. Moore, do you have a report?
I like that, but I have to note, so I better just say that. So I had the opportunity to attend the AASB retreat with all of you. So got signed in one day and then started the retreat right away. So that was great orientation, and I continue to get oriented and learn the processes and policies. I will attend one day of the conference up in Anchorage, and then I'll be at my niece's state swim meet. So, and then I meet with Mandy Summers of Pacific High School tomorrow. And I just wanted to say I attended the regional swim meet last weekend, and it was just an exciting environment to be in. Very proud of all of the swim teams, but it was nice to see the camaraderie that our swimmers displayed with each other, but also the support they provided to all the other swimmers. It was just very heartwarming, but very exciting atmosphere. So, thank you.
Thank you. It sounds exciting. Mr. Gavon, thank you for your report. Mr. Gavon?
Like Melanie, I just really enjoyed the opportunity to have the board retreat the other weekend. Great opportunity for us to disconnect and kind of build that teamwork or get to know each other and how we can work well together. I'm also really excited about some of the priorities we've set. In particular, you know, around the budget and looking long-term at our budget and budget processes. And really, really looking forward to working with Mitch and the staff to kind of tackle some of that and bring some ideas back to the board for full consideration. And just lastly, Mandy, Summer already mentioned in her report, but the class I volunteered to co-teach with Matt Rowland, the government class at Pacific High, wrapped up a week and a half ago or so. And I just want to, it was such a great opportunity for me. And so just wanted to thank Pacific High, the students there, the staff there, for welcoming me into the building and making that class such a great time. Matt and I, we realized kind of towards the end of the class, what the class, you know, really boiled down to is that, excuse me, we wanted to give, we wanted to give the students there, we wanted to give them the knowledge, the skills, and the confidence to be able to engage in the public processes that affect their lives. So the class was based around government, Alaska government standards. We also use the DEES career cluster for public administration and management, cultural standards for teachers, ELA standards, in particular, those for informational texts and speaking and listening. And then SEL, social emotional learning standards as well. The core competencies, the way Pacific High works is generally the classes have about three core competencies they're focused on. And what we really focused on was developing personal identity, social identity and teamwork, and then inquiry and research. You know, just setting those mindsets, letting students explore who they are, what their values are, what experiences have shaped their lives, what they want to see for the future, giving them opportunities for teamwork to build that social identity, what is their relationship to the larger community of Sika. And inquiry and research, just setting that inquiry mindset of always asking questions, questions leading to more questions, putting on that analytical, you know, those kind of analytical lenses and seeing themselves as researchers. So Clover, who was here earlier, was one of the students. Aubrey, who was recognized last week, and just so many great students. And I'll just end by really thanking the students for welcoming me into their school and for trusting me, trusting one another, trusting their teachers to share their ideas, you know, and explore all these themes. And so I just, again, really appreciate Pacific High and everything that they do and the model of education that they're providing. So, yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Gavon. Mr. Geckler?
It's hard to follow that. I as well, the board retreat was excellent, as always, is my second one. Lots of great information to those from the board. Excellent presenter. So lots of great information there. And I am looking forward to the AASB annual conference coming up. I think everybody's leaving for that tomorrow, so we're all geared for that. Just looking forward to that and very thankful to be where I am.
Thank you, Mr. Geckler. Felix, would you like to have a report?
Yes, so I wanted to take this time to first explain sort of more about that position that Ms. Lundvik brought up that I was selected for by interview. So I was selected to be the junior speed rep, student representative to the State Board of Education and Early Development for the state of Alaska. In that position, what that means is that I will be one of the students representing all students of Alaska to that board. And next year, I'll be sitting as the senior representative and be a full voting member of the Board of Education for the state of Alaska. And so that is a pretty incredible opportunity, I would say, for me. And I'm very grateful that I had the opportunity and to be able to be on this board with all of you is extremely helpful in learning sort of what we can value and prioritize when it comes to what all of the school board, what all of our school districts need across the state and what we need. And so sort of going into this school board conference that we're going to over the next few days, I hope to sort of, with you all, connect with some of the other districts and learn sort of all about the different, you know, sizes and the different ways that education occurs in the state of Alaska so that I can have a better idea and better view of how I can properly represent all of Alaska to that board. So I'm very excited for that opportunity. And I can't wait to go up there and use that as a learning opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your report, Felix. All right, so I'll look at my board report. I will reiterate that our time with Timmy Chivers was very well spent at the board retreat. I enjoyed getting to know the board members a little bit more. And we did, as Mr. Gavon stated, we got to hone in on what our goals were and what we were going to work towards this coming year. I was able to stop by and visit Sika High School a couple of times. And every single time I visit there, I am just amazed with the student body and Sandra and all of the work that these teachers are doing in that building. I was able to go to the music production, the concert. That was amazing as well. It was just amazing to see a room full of students together, again, playing music. I love and support the arts, so, you know, it was just a great event to be a part of. Hearing about the three schools together warms my heart because, again, in my time, we did not have that. We had such a thing called Battle the Bridge. So, you know, it's really great to hear that that is going away and that we are building bridges instead of battling them. So, you know, I was able to speak at the assembly and talk about the upcoming Student Activity Fund sessions that will be coming up November 10th from 5:30 to 7:30 at Keet Gushin multipurpose room. And again, let's see, yeah, that's the one coming up. So yeah, I spoke to that at the assembly meeting and I believe that's it. So yeah, I'm looking forward to the AASB conference this time around. You know, it's just a great event to come together and listen to what the other school districts are going through and kind of coming together and seeing Alaska's school districts as a whole and also gaining more and more information on how to apply that to our district. So we will be traveling tomorrow, and it should be a good time of learning. That is my report. Moving on to item 12, Administrative Reports. Can I hand that out to you?
Thank you very much. Run through the reports we have, and then I'll have my superintendent's update. Just starting off, we've got the budget update. You'll see your monthly revenue and expenses report. You'll see your monthly revenue and expenses report. We'll go into a little more details later on in the agenda where we talk about the budget revision that we have. But if there are any questions on the monthly revenue reports, I'd always like to make sure that everybody has that in front of them. What I really wanted to spend a couple of minutes, you know, a little bit of time with focusing on is just the enrollment numbers too and talking about that. We did actually have the finish of the October count. So, as you know, that's the 20 days in October that the State Department of Education Early Development uses to identify our average daily membership. That ended on Friday, October 28th. When we look at the numbers that you have in front of you, you'll see that our demographic enrollment breakdown for the schools is for total 1,116 students. So, we are under with the enrollment, the head count, if you will, for the, you know, what we projected, 1,125. But I did just want to remind the board, when the state and when we calculate the actual percentage of enrollment, we do look at percentages of students. And a good example to try to demonstrate this is when you look at Reach Homeschool. Reach Homeschool indicates that we have 37 students that are enrolled at Reach Homeschool. But in the foundation formula, Reach Homeschool only counts as 90%. So, each student only counts as 90% of a student when it looks at the percentage of their enrollment towards our average daily membership. And so, what you'll see is in those 37 students, we actually for the count only get to count 33.3% of those students. And so, that's a good way of demonstrating, you know, how the count looks at percentages as well. And then, we do have some students that are part-time enrollment in the district and they might be enrolled in another, you know, correspondence program through the state. It might be 60% with SSD and then 40% with another correspondence program in the state. And so, it takes some time for us to go through. Once the October count is finished, we go through and submit the numbers that we have to the state. And the state goes through and looks at a statewide perspective at different districts, different programs, and see if there's any overlap in our students. So, we won't have that final count for a little bit of time yet. But I did want to just give a little bit of overview of that count. It is finished, we'll be submitting those numbers to the state. And just to make sure that I do let the board know that we are expecting that our final numbers, once reviewed by the Department of Ed, will come in under the projected enrollment number of 1,125. So, we will not hit that enrollment number that we were looking at when we built the projections. But we do, and we'll talk a little bit about this more in the budget, you know, we are hopeful that that number we're shooting for, you know, around 14, 13 below that, around the 1,111, 1,112. But we won't have that final number until the state goes through and does the final review of the numbers that we put through. So, I just wanted to kind of provide that overview. So, were there any questions on kind of enrollment? All right. With that, I'm going to jump into my superintendent's report. So, we had a lot of fun yesterday at SSD. I had the opportunity to take a photo with a young aviator, Maverick. He goes by from Baranoff. And we're also joined by a sister, a Jedi, if you get a chance to see that. Those were just getting a chance to go through the schools and seeing just some of the fun that was taking place. I didn't include the picture, but I was able to locate Waldo, who looked suspiciously like Principal Demmer's. And so, that was a lot of fun. The other thing, I talked about this a little bit earlier, but I wanted to show the picture. Kikushin and Sue Ross at Kikushin put together the most amazing spooky gymnasium, spooky maze, complete with an inflatable slide. I just had to include some of these pictures and, you know, some of the fun that the students were having. And it just, she does this every year and it just was amazing to see. But I really wanted to highlight lower right-hand side of that picture of that slide. The slide was huge. It was almost to the top of the gym and the kids were climbing up there. And the really exciting thing for me, and I had to wear a suit today, but it's going to be up all this week and it's rated for adults. So, tomorrow, I'm planning on stopping by and actually taking a slide down the slide because it actually looked like a lot of fun, the kids were having a blast. But there was just, it was just really fun to see. And it was just a great opportunity for the students to just really enjoy, you know, being active, PE class. You want to be active, but they were active and having fun. And that's so important.
The pictures don't do it justice.
The pictures, thank you, the pictures do not do it justice. So, it really is impressive, so. We also had, October is a very busy month for teachers. And so, I always like to highlight some of our schools as well that didn't get a chance to present to you. You know, for Kikushin, fifth grade students and Mrs. Tullis' class made homemade salsa to raise money for our local Humane Society. Scientists from the Science Center also visited and actually revisited many of our classes this month. At Kikushin, students participated in squid dissections, animal adaptations, and learned about bird habitats. So, scientists actually came in and also spoke about the hazards of pollution on our marine environment. In addition, the bagpipers from the Seattle Fire Department came to Keet. They were at the playground during, you know, one of the playground sessions and lunch on Alaska Day as part of the celebrations. And students had a chance to listen to the bagpipers and try out the bass drum. So, a number of students, you can see, got a chance to beat the bass drum. And man, the smile on their faces was just fantastic to see. Other happenings at Keet this month included watching the Army Band perform at the PAC. And 4-H Club, four Keet students began as our community rec program. Keet also had a fun Halloween and are looking forward to meeting with families for parent-teacher conferences this week. Really, about the only thing I have to say and I think all the students at Blatchley Middle School would agree, last Thursday, Blatchley hosted their Halloween dance. And to say students were excitement is a understatement. It was a quote-unquote "big deal" for the students and the staff. Over 230 of the students attended and most of the staff were there as well. And I really, it just, I mean, middle school dances are just so much fun because the students just come together, they socialize, have such a good time. And it was just, it's great to be able to provide that for our students again. Blatchley would also like to just give a quick shout out to the Elks Club for allowing them to have a benefit dinner fundraiser for the schools last Sunday, October 23rd. Funds will go to student activities, clubs, and sports. You've heard a lot from Principal Lundvik earlier about some of the activities. And I just wanted to highlight a couple of other things. And I really just want to thank the SICA Center for their continued coverage of our SSD athletics and activities. We really love to see our students celebrated. We have, of course, our cross-country team who were recognized earlier for their amazing season. Our SICA High School Drama Debate Physics Team, or DDF, as everybody likes to refer to them, continues its strong season. And Principal Lundvik was right. I got a complete listing of all the awards that they had at their last meet. And it would take way too much time to go through because they just, reward after reward after recognition. It's just as impressive to see just how great our DDF team is and how well they're doing. We also have here a picture of the Lady Wolf Sea Wolf seniors. And as again, it was said, the SICA High School is hosting volleyball regions. It'll be here, you know, through this week. Some other news, wrestling is ongoing. SICA High School hosted over 170 students from 11 Southeast districts this last weekend for the wrestling meet. And as you heard, they're heading to ACS for the ACS, or to Anchorage for the ACS tournament this weekend. Felix Myers and Kayla Orlando returned from Wasilla after a three-day Alaska Association of Student Government Conference. You've heard all about the great things that are happening there and just want to congratulate the students again for their recognitions. Swimmers, of course, are competing in state this coming weekend. And we do have six swimmers there. And I just want to take this opportunity, not only to thank, you know, Principal Lundvik, Rich Groupa, and Principal McCarthy for all the hard work and dedication. I really want to thank them because a lot of the activities and the sports, they're doing these things after hours, you know, after the workday and they're there until, you know, 9:30, 10 o'clock, sometimes later. You know, just dedicating their time to the students. And I just really appreciate it. Going to the wrestling match this weekend, you know, there's, you know, Tyler's at the gate, making sure people are coming in. And, you know, Groupa's going around, making sure everything's running smooth. And it's just, it's amazing teamwork, bringing them all together, support our students and our athletes. And so, I just wanted to take that moment to thank them. In addition, we had SICA High School, of course, had the 19 students, seven choir and 12 band, participate in the Southeast Alaska Honors Music Festival in Haynes last week. I got a chance to go through and watch all of the performances. And if you don't know my past history, I used to run the music and finance department for the district office as a workshop teacher. And the performances were fantastic. And I had to include a QR code up in here. So, when you see the QR code, go on that QR code. It'll open up to the website, the YouTube page. It has all the performances. They were fantastic. The students did such a great job. And it was just, it was really great to see that caliber of performance and students coming together and just spent a few days. They had the music, rehearsed the music, come together, and just put on such an amazing concert that sounded just great. And I just really encourage everyone to go in there and watch that. And I also wanted to give a shout out to Theo Everson, one of SICA's own, who had a DFL feature in one of the pieces. And so, it was really nice. I would encourage everyone to go in and watch the performances. They really were great. As we talked about, the state of Alaska has a new statewide assessment, AKSTAR, that was introduced last spring and has replaced PCEs. Students in Grade 3 through 9 took the assessment last spring as part of the linking study between the math assessment, which we were doing previously and will continue to provide for students. And the AKSTAR is a new summative assessment for the state of Alaska. The results of AKSTAR and the AK Science Assessment for grades 5, 8, and 10 will be published on the state website on November 10. Schools will be distributing the AKSTAR student reports to parents by December 9. The National NAEP test results recently came out on October 24th. This was the headline from the State Department of Education Early Development in the States. Amidst deep nationwide declines, Alaska maintains achievement level in reading and declines in math. And I just wanted to remind everyone, we talked about this at the last meeting, that we don't receive any district-level results from NAEP. Only the very large districts in blue here do in California like LA, Atlanta, and Denver. NAEP doesn't give us any data on our district specifically or any comparison of our districts with other districts. It's also a common misperception that NAEP tests all of Alaska's students. Instead, it tests a small sample of Alaska's students. So, approximately 1,600 students in Alaska in 210 schools in grade 4, 8, and 12 are tested. We continue to make progress on our community-driven SICA School District Strategic Plan. And I really want to take this opportunity to focus this month on strategy number six, which is we will expand and remove participation barriers for students. The passing of Proposition 1 will have a significant positive impact on advancing this strategy. The district has provided information to the public on how we might expand opportunities and remove participation barriers for students in extracurricular activities with the passing of Proposition 1. How we might be able to provide some of these expanded opportunities are outlined here. And I want to take a moment to kind of read through them. Establishing a Student Activity Scholarship Fund to assist families with activities, participation fees, and other costs associated with participation in student activities. Eligibility for scholarship funds would be established through the already existing free and reduced-price meal application process. In other words, students who qualify for free and reduced meal prices would automatically be eligible for Student Activity Scholarship Fund. The other area we're looking at, you know, possibilities for the Student Activities Fund. Reducing student activity participation costs by capping the student activities participation fee to one yearly fee rather than a per-activity fee. Currently, students pay a fee for each activity from 200 to 400 per activity. This change to a yearly fee from a per-activity fee would expand opportunities for students to participate in multiple activities. We'll also look at, you know, in conjunction with fundraising, supporting teams' regular season activity and travel. Travel for students who qualify for regional and state events and travel for students who qualify for free and reduced-price meals. Supporting non-athletic activities, participation at middle school and elementary school levels. And of course, we really want to hear from parents, communities, staff, and other public through public listening sessions and the advisory committee that we're looking and forming. And so, we are actually having those. We actually held our first listening session on the new Student Activities Fund last week. And we have another one scheduled on October 10th. The listening sessions are open to everyone and the goal is to hear ideas on the use of the Student Activities Fund. We also have a survey up on our website under the Quick Links header on the front page of our website. And you can also just scan this QR code and it'll take you right to the survey as well. At that survey, you're able to rank the ideas in the previous two slides. On the survey, you will also have the opportunity to provide other suggestions you might have as far as uses for the Student Activities Fund. Our preliminary survey responses included a strong preference for students for the use of the fund directly for students, which is exactly in line with what the Assembly talked about and the district's initial ideas are focusing on. Heat pumps for Blatchley have started to arrive. So, this is exciting, good news for everyone. Two are here. Our contractor has received the shipping bill from AML for the others. So, we're hoping that they're getting here quickly. The photo is from this morning. So, the photo that you see here is from this morning. It was a little bit dark outside, so it's a little bit hard to see. But our contractor is pulling out the old heat pumps today in preparation for installing the new ones. As I said in my update last month, he was able to Band-Aid one of the units and get some heat going in the building. So, the building has heat, has had some heat in the interim. But we're excited for that process to be starting. As we talked about earlier in the fall, SSD submitted an application for the EPA Electric Bus Rebate Program. The application submitted a total of nine buses for a rebate. We were excited about the opportunity but realized it might not happen this year because SSD was not considered a quote-unquote "priority district" for the program. We did get the results of that. And Rangel was considered a priority district and they were selected and are receiving, you know, receive the rebate. Along with Valdez, we are on the waitlist. So, if another district drops out of the program or there is some other issue, we might still qualify, but it's likely a long shot for this year. This is though, it's important to say, this is just the first round of funding to aid in the transition to electric buses. The district will continue to have more opportunities and to apply for future funding. Always wanted to kind of, want to highlight that SSD is still looking for substitutes. So, please consider applying to serve as a substitute. Once you've applied and been accepted, you can set your preferences for schools and classes in our system. So, the district increased substitute pay last year as well. And so, we're really working to get the word out to anyone who is interested and we're encouraging teachers to talk to friends and family to see if they know someone who would be interested in subbing. If anyone is interested in only subbing at a certain grade level or school or for a specific teacher, this is something that we can accommodate. So, please contact the district office if you're interested in subbing. Finally, we'll be starting our budget process soon. And while we're not seeing the same effects on our funding from declining enrollment as other districts, we are not immune from the funding crisis affecting Alaska's schools. This article will describe, quote, "the same Alaska-wide problem. Most school funding is derived by the state and the state's per-student funding formula has failed to keep pace with inflation," end quote. As my colleague, the superintendent of the Kenai Peninsula School District stated, or states in the article, quote, "Everything has gone up. Liability insurance, healthcare insurance have been huge drivers and state funding hasn't kept up with it," end quote. That's the same situation in our district. As the community gets going, or as the process gets going, we'll be holding listening sessions to hear from the staff and the community all that is coming down that road and we'll be, you know, getting more information about that. But I just wanted to make sure that everyone knows SICA will not be the unicorn. We will not be the only Alaska district that escapes hard budget decisions this year. And so, just wanted to have that conversation. And lastly, in other announcements, we have no school November 3rd for conferences and November 4th for an in-service day. The second Student Activities Fund Listening Session, like I said earlier, is scheduled on Thursday, November 10th from 5:30 to 7 at Kikushin. And also, please consider volunteering near schools, in the classroom, on the playground. If you have any questions about how to volunteer, please call your school for more information and schedule a time to come in and ask my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Frank. Any questions for Frank? Let's see him now. Moving on to item 13, new business, 13A. This is a budget revision. Can I get a motion to approve Agenda Item 13A Budget Revision?
I approve the FY23 budget revision as presented.
May I get a second?
Five seconds.
Is there any further comment? All right. Is there any board comments? Motion on the table is to approve Agenda Item 13A Budget Revision as presented. Since there is money involved, there is... Since there is money involved, there needs to be a roll call. Done. Todd Geltler?
Yes.
Tristan Givon?
Yes.
Naomi Board?
Yes.
Mitch Moore?
Yes.
Blossom Teal Olsen?
Yes.
Motion passed. All right. Moving on to Item 13B. Board bylaw 9110 is being amended to add a student representative from Pacific High School to the Sika school to the, let me, let me start this. Board bylaw 9110 is being amended to add a student representative from Pacific High School to school board membership. Can I have a motion to approve BB 9110 board membership on its first reading?
I'm to approve that pro's changed to board bylaw 9110 first reading.
The motion has been made, and may I get a second?
Yes, sir.
Motion has been made and seconded to approve Board bylaw 9110 board membership on first reading. Is any public comment? Is any board comment?
Yes. I would just, as I know what we talked about in our policy meeting, I just want to say it out loud once again at this meeting. As the student representative for the, for Sika High School, I'm in full support of adding a new member from Pacific High School. I think having more student voices and hearing different perspectives and also giving that opportunity to those students is very important when it comes to including everyone in that opportunity, and I'm very excited to have a new member to work with as well.
I agree. Thank you, Felix. I would like that, that I will heartily agree, and I know that this is the first reading, and hopefully in the near future, we will have more student input. Any more board comment? Seeing none. The motion on the table is to approve Board bylaw 9110 board membership on first reading. Any opposition? Seeing none. The motion passes. Moving on to 13C. Oh, actually, we skipped that. Moving on to 13D. Review CARES ARP funding.
Just want to get everybody a quick review. This is the breakdown of CARES funding. I just wanted to make sure that we highlighted it and made sure everybody was aware of the breakdown in how CARES funding is being used at this time. A couple of highlights we wanted to, you know, point out and make sure the board was aware of, that we're looking at. If you look through the spreadsheet on page 2, you'll see a breakdown, and, you know, where the estimated budget for SR2 and SR3. And as you can see, we have spent down SR2 funding. There's no more SR2 balance remaining for the CARES funding for SR2. When you look at SR3, and you see the estimated budget that's broken down and spent and encumbered. A couple of highlights that we want to just kind of point out is, we do have and reduced the amount for AmeriCorps members from $150,000, which is what we had originally, to $60,000. We have just not been able to find all the AmeriCorps members that we wanted, but we do have two, and we're hoping that we still can find maybe a couple more. So we did leave $60,000 in there for four members, but at this point, we've only spent $30,000. And then the other highlights, just wanted to point out, which falls under the, kind of the last half of the page, SR funding recommendations. We are looking to fund what is a matching grant for the New Vision Grants, $4,000 to provide professional development on culture and arts for our administrators. And so we're excited to be able to provide some professional development for our administrators in the district to attend a conference to learn more about, as part of the New Visions Grant, as well as artists in residence. Wanted to use, again, a matching grant, $15,000 to be able to provide and support artists in residence in Sika School District. This is something that we have been, you know, we just have not had the opportunity to have as much artists in residence with the pandemic, and so this is, I think, a great use of being able to take COVID-19 funds and use it to try to address some of the loss of learning and loss of opportunity that our students had during the pandemic. And I see this as a great way of being able to use the funds to do a matching grant to be able to bring and provide artists in schools. And so, and those are two recommendations that we have for the use of the SR3 money that's remaining. And then with those, the way the budget's out right now, that would leave the remainder of $102,731, which could go down if we find two more AmeriCorps members. And with that, if there's any questions, I'm happy to answer.
Any questions? Seeing none. Thank you, Frank, for that update. Moving on to 13E. This is, 13E is, was added to allow the board to discuss a new order of agenda. As, you know, we met with Timmy Tullos from ASB at our board retreat, just to give you some background, if you're watching in the audience. And she had suggested moving our agenda around to accommodate families, particularly to persons to be heard. And as we discussed it in our retreat, there's some of us that we were open to possibly changing the order of our agenda to accommodate persons to be heard, to set a general time so that the public would know that around this time, you may speak to the board. At this time, we do not have that setting, and so we're having this discussion tonight whether or not we want to stick with our agenda the way it is, or if we want to move towards the agenda model that Timmy set out for us or presented to us. So, Board, do you have anything to say to that? Are you open to change, or do you like things the way that they are?
Well, this is the trainer's test on comments. She was mentioning maybe moving forward, closer to the beginning of the meeting, because right now it says at 5:08 after our committee. Yeah, I'd move it forward would be great. I have no objection to that. I think it's a great idea.
Mr. Kaman?
Yeah, I'm wondering, because I know one of the suggestions was, because the persons to be heard at number eight that's currently on our agenda here is the persons to be heard on opportunities not on the agenda. And I think the discussion, as I recall it, was having an item for, or having a persons to be heard for items on the agenda at the beginning of the meeting, and removing the persons to be heard from each agenda item. And I've been reflecting on that quite a bit since, since our retreat. And I would, what I would be in favor of would be adding a persons to be heard on items on the agenda at the beginning of the meeting, but I would want to keep the persons to be heard within each agenda item, so that we're providing two opportunities. If people want to stay through the meeting, speak on the agenda item as it comes up, they have that opportunity, but we also expand the opportunity for public comment to allow at the beginning of the meeting for those people who, who don't want to sit through the entire meeting, or who have children, or who have jobs. So, so I would be in favor of that. I think any expansion of public input is a good thing, so.
Thank you for that clarification, Mr. Kaman. That's, you articulated, but I had not. So thank you for that. Ms. Board, do you have an opinion?
I guess just clarification then of where it would go? Where, where are you thinking? But yes, I am in favor if I'm open to that, of changing or adding another persons to be heard.
I think right now it would be, since it's a discussion topic, we're primarily discussing whether or not we're open to moving it. If we are in favor of moving it, it would move to an action item in December. And then at that time, we would, we would clarify the exact order when, Mr. Moore?
I'm open to moving it. I would say that if we allow this to sit through the head.
Yeah. It does seem interesting. I don't know the reason why it has been placed where it is in our agenda. I think moving it up would, I'd say, make more sense, just because then we can hear kind of that public input and then get all of the rest of our business, and then people can leave if they need to, yeah.
I would blame rabbit rules. I tend to do that a lot. Mr. Hauser?
I just wanted to highlight a couple of things, and as we discussed this in the Board thinks about it more, one thing I wanted to point out is, you know, we do have recognitions on item number seven, if you will, as you look at the number of agenda that we have today, and we have the Holotene Students of the Month. We recognize, you know, sometimes staff, sometimes students, additional students. Depending on what the agenda items might be for our persons to be heard for agenda items, if we do add an additional persons to be heard for, you know, agenda items earlier in the program, and we move it up before recognitions for our, you know, kind of student recognitions, that will require then students to stay later while persons of heard, persons to be heard takes place, which depending on the items that they want to speak on, it could be just one person, it could be many people. And so I just want to make sure that if we do shift, I think it's worth us thinking about the impact it might have on our recognitions, and do we want to consider moving recognitions maybe before the board meeting and not make it part of the actual board meeting, but maybe 15, 20 minutes before the board meeting, we recognize students, and then we start the board meeting, then we have our normal board meeting. And so students can come in, still get to recognize them, but it adjusts it a little bit to where we don't, we still want to get that public input, but we also don't move it in a way that it has, it keeps students away from doing their homework and, you know, spending time with families and making sure they get to bed on time, you know, so they're refreshed and ready to go in the morning.
Any additions from Mr. Hauser's comments?
I feel worse for that than anybody else.
I mean, personally, I would, I wouldn't mind coming early for the recognitions. I think that would even be more helpful for the students as well, because that would allow them to go home and eat and have family time and keep a schedule that would be more helpful for them. Mr. Geltler?
Yeah, that's, that is a good point, man. It'd be more comfortable, perhaps for the students, be less horrible, you know, meeting, yes, at four, all kind of, by the children. Students maybe don't really enjoy that horrible vibe. So perhaps at the beginning of a meeting, I mean, part of a meeting, just at the beginning of a meeting, that's, that's a great idea.
Yeah, just to add to that, from the student perspective, I know many students would not want to sit through sort of the approval and all of our normal meeting procedures, just knowing high schoolers and elementary schoolers too especially, having to sit through that. So I think having those recognitions for would be reasonable for my students.
All right. Well, I think we've discussed moving our agenda around. I think we're in favor and open to that, so we will note that down and discuss it at our agenda meeting. Look forward to, do we need a phone on? No, we don't. Okay. Just making sure. All right. Let's see. Item 14, correspondence and information. Seeing none. Moving on to item 15, future agenda items, upcoming events. 15A, ASB's annual conference in Anchorage, November 3rd through the 6th. We are traveling tomorrow, you guys. I hope we're all ready. If I'm not, I hope to be rested by then. It should be a good trip. Item 15, Policy Committee Meeting, November 9th at 5:00 PM in the district office boardroom. Item 15C, the second student activity fund listening session, November 10th from 5:30 to 7:30 in the Kikushin multipurpose room. I hope that all families who are interested in giving input and finding out more about that, please attend. We want your input. Last but not least, item 15D, next regular school board meeting will be December 7th, 2022, at 6:00 PM, Harriken's Centennial Hall. With that, may I get a motion to adjourn the meeting?
To adjourn?
A second?
Second up?
Or a second, I thought, you guys want to stay here all night. It's been moved at second then. Meeting has suspended at 8:59.
Just before that.
Hey, can we knock out? Can we keep this and give it back?
You can give it back to me.
Blessings, thank you so much.
And just to get everybody, they are closing out at 9 o'clock, so we'll have to, yeah, get that off. Just a little bit, sorry. You can drop off your, yeah, you've got your new computers. If you have any questions, we can help, we can get you set up, but it shouldn't be as simple as just putting your password and your account in.